And we'll begin with Commissioner Jackson. I have it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything on the agenda. Just a couple of things. We do have the Turkey Trot next week, next Thursday. There will be some traffic delays in the area. I'm asking everybody to be careful when they're driving in the area. We also have the tree lighting on December 6th and west of December 8th on Stewart Avenue by Phillips Wall. We're also asking people to be by their facility, so we be careful and have a safe events. I just want to mention that during the past week, we had two very good arrests. But now on the freeway, there were seven judges on multiple dates in the village. And that was by Detective Division. And also we're continually enforcing passing school buses. And today we have forty tickets issued. We have their routes. We have probable cases as reported by presidents. And we have also what the officers are seeing out there. So been very successful. We have forty tickets so far.
Alright, any questions?
Commissioner, I just want to thank you for putting an officer on the clinch. I did see one this morning, early in the morning. And I do understand that they've been really busy writing tickets for these people. Not stopping at stop signs, going through red lights, or even commercial vehicles going down. Just thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. G. Aliyala?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Board of Justices. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening, but I do want to bring the board up to speed as far as two topics. As far as the open permits from 2017 to 2019, as we're continuing to close out. To date, right now, we have about three hundred and fifty-one open permits. This is building, just building permit related, not the miscellaneous electrical plumbing, mechanics, and so forth. So this is building permits which hold deposits. There are about three hundred and fifty-one that we're trying to close out right now. And the other topic is, just want to bring the board to speed on the open property holder request. To date, we received about fourteen hundred requests. And with the help of the interns that Department has at this time, we actually issued about five hundred of those back to the residents. To create the overtask, but we're trying to move forward with that.
I just wanted to comment on the folders. At our last meeting, I had a new servant who had told me that they had received it. And regardless of the age of the house, they were all fascinated by what was actually in the files. The original blueprints of the house, the drafts, the architects, all the designs. So anyone who hasn't done it, please do it. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of the residents.
Where do you think you will be at on December 3rd or 1st?
That was my next question, Mayor. As far as the expiration date we have here, and I was asking for the board's opinion on that as far as extending that date. Because we only received about fourteen hundred or so of these requests. And we have about seven thousand parcels. So, you know, applicants are coming forward, but not as much as we thought we were going to come forward.
It seems that we would have to extend.
Right, so I'm asking for the board's...
Mayor, I think we could extend, but I think we have to put time limit on this thing. It has to end sometime. If you want to extend it to July 1, fine. But the other thing is, maybe Corinne, if she's here, can bang that away on the newspaper. So that people understand, you know, one-time shopping.
Well, I suggest what we do is, whether it's, you know, once a month, or two or three months, or four months, let's take out a full-page ad, thirty in the two newspapers. You should see it. Seven hundred bucks for that, who cares?
Let's start to do that.
Why don't we do that?
Well, let's decide right now. What would the succession be?
I would recommend we wait till the first of the year, because people are busy this time of year. I would say January, February.
Make it July 1.
And make it July 1.
And we'll do ads like...
January, March.
January, February, and then maybe...
Then it's March.
Last month?
Yeah.
Full-page.
A full-page is only about three hundred and seventy-five.
And maybe we should do one in May, or June. Your time is running out, July 1. Well, again, send that out to all the POAs, again, with the email address. Put it on the Phillips website. I don't know if we could also maybe put it on the water bills that everyone gets. That's great. You could simply put it on the back of the water bill.
Oh, may I have a motion to extend? Extend the... Thank you. A little Wilson favor. Okay, now motion passed. Can I have a sleep?
Just so I understand, that motion is to run the full-page ad in January, February, March?
I would say again, in June. So that extending the date until July 1 for those residents who want to get copies of their...
For full-page ad and full-papers?
And that motion passed, yes.
Okay, yes.
Just a question. What's the flow of the DC clip? Are they coming in at a decent rate?
I'm averaging about, right now, probably a dozen every other day, something like that. Okay, it's not, you know, it's not as much as the, well, it first started, at least on June 1st was the upcoming. So they're coming in sporadically.
You know, human nature being what it is, when we reach the moment that we are, we have sent, you know, not to... They will be made a village owner.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Going back, we just looked at that. The, the open permits with deposits? Did we at some point, the board, pass some rule that after two years, it's for, something like that? Didn't we do that?
Yes, we've amended the village code by the enactment of a local law. Although I don't recall the precise period. You address the issue of open permits and that they would expire by a certain date.
And you lose the money, you should deposit. So we kind of track that, so in that number you gave, three hundred plus?
Well, I have a mail merge going on tomorrow as far as the open permits that we established to see. So, and then basically what we do is, from eighteen to nineteen, they have an option to extend. They pay another fee to keep that going on here. So there is an option to extend.
No, no, that's not... But there was an extension. Where someone, you know, five years ago, put down a deposit for whatever, and never did anything.
And walked away.
That's, 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 we don't...
That's forfeit, yes.
Okay.
That's forfeit.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything further?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Strisco?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda. Just want to bring up two items. Just remind residents with the leaves left in the street, don't park your cars. Hot cars over leaves. General courses are car fire. And residents may stop using their fireplaces more often now. Please remember to open your flue in the fireplace.
Mayor and their village administrator, item four.
Same question. We talked last summer. What were we going to do with engineering? Didn't we hire an architect?
Yes, we hired an architect. And some of us are going to see the initial presentation of the architect tomorrow. And then instead of telling the entire board, Chief has seen it. And trustee Olbrook and I are going tomorrow. Trustee Hare will go when he comes back.
It's a VR presentation.
And didn't he fulfill his promise that it will look exactly like the one that's there, didn't he?
It looks very similar to the original.
I should go to that meeting tomorrow so that I can look at it.
It was a very nice job. It was just when I went last week, this Friday, and it was remarkable. And the residents, it's not going to be as, I was...
Your white shed.
The metal shed.
Metal shed. I think we should get him his shirt.
It's not going to be a metal shed.
It's a log on the outside.
You say that, we haven't gotten to Philly yet.
Anyway, very welcome. Very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. G. Francisco? Oh, did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor. Item four of the village administrator is a settlement agreement with Advanced Builders and Land Development. Mr. Swazin asked me to address that. It's more in the nature of almost of a forbearance agreement. We began litigation against Advanced Builders and Land Development because the village felt that certain work done at the senior center was not properly done. However, the defendant, Advanced Builders, has agreed with us now. And they are going to come in and fix all that work. So we're simply standing down on the litigation. They're going to come in and fix everything. We're going to hire a project manager that they are going to pay for to make sure that the work is done properly. They're picking up all the expenses. If everything is done and satisfactorily done, then at the end of it, we will withdraw the litigation.
All's well, it ends well.
I don't really see it. We're not there yet.
Nonquite. Mr. G. Francisco?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items on the agenda this evening. I have a few items for the library bathroom project. Item A, number seven A, is a full authorization request to pay an invoice for a change order. That was actually already done. We replaced a sink in the children's bathroom. It's part of this project. The original sink, we felt was too big for the room, and we installed a smaller sink. Item B, we had ordered door handles for the bathrooms in the library. We weren't happy with them, so we ordered three new door handles. This is a request for new lock sets for the doors. And item number three is to paint the exterior hallway outside the bathroom. As now we have three new bathrooms, I felt that the hallway outside needs to be touched up. It would look nicer since there's brand new bathrooms.
Thank you.
So... Item number eight is a maintenance bond for the generator that was installed at Municipal Yard. And item number nine is a single-source purchase for what's called Duke's Root Control. And this is an item that we use to prevent the roots from intruding into the sewer mains, sewer system in the village. It's a natural product that we install. They actually apply for us in strategic areas around the village to prevent a root intrusion into the sewer system.
Very good, very well. Mrs. Roon?
Good evening. On the agenda tonight for the Finance Department, we only have a few transfer items. The first item is related to the tax discounts that are given to taxpayers. They either fully ear taxes on June 1st or in June, when the first half tax payments are due. As you know, taxes are due in June and December of every year. But for a small discount, if you choose to pay the full ear taxes in June, you get some kind of discount. We average about thirty-five thousand dollars in discounts given every year. And this year, it exceeded that by a little over a thousand dollars. So we're requesting a transfer to cover that. And the next items to be transferred are from the TPW department for additional work that was needed in these departments, in the street lighting, storm sewer departments, due to additional work that was done.
Very good. And Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Recreation has a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Number five is fence replacement at Grove Park, Nassau Haven Park, and the front parking lot at Stewart Field. We need to transfer about two hundred and fifty dollars into that account to complete this work. The work is being done under a Suffolk County Public Works contract by Residential Fencing. And these three fences are the older and less nice-looking fences in our system. Next year, we'll be coming back, I think, looking for replacement at Henlock and Tullamore. But these are the worst right now. Number six, license agreement with the Delphi University for use of the swimming pool for our indoor Learn to Swim program. This is an annual license that we do with the Delphi. We do run about sixteen thousand dollars worth of fees in this program. And we are requesting that that license be approved tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Swazin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I asked you to be early to cover number four, the settlement with Advanced Builders. But I did want to mention to the board that the school bus at the Seventh Street Paint Station has been completely restored. Mr. Blake, Steve will be returning to landscaping around the grand share around the pedestal in the near future to bring it back to its full glory.
Very good. We waited one time, and I'm sure it's local.
It's very nice.
Alright. Trustees, any comments this evening? Mr. Dorni, trustee Dorni?
I got a couple of things. First, I just thought I'd give an update. You know, Joe and Peter were at the Nassau County... I don't know what we, the rules, the rules, I don't know if my rules is dealing with parks. But hopefully, this coming Monday, we'll be able to get final approval from the legislature on our plan to be able to use the north side of Stewart Field for the half park, half parking area. So hopefully. They approved the plans long ago, at least a while ago.
Many years ago. It seems.
It's taken a long, long time for no apparent reason, but the wheels grind slowly. I want to mention, which I think probably most people know, but I know a few months ago, we spoke about bike racks during the budget process. And I know several of them have been done. I know the west side, south side, Nassau Boulevard. And I think also Stewart. It's the way we should buy, buy racks, my suggestion, instead of just planting a metal bike rack in the grass.
Doesn't really work very well.
And the last thing I want to talk about, I mean, in two parts. The governor is in a battle with National Grid. And I'd like us to talk about what that might mean for us.
Oh, are you going to do that now, or are you doing it in the works session?
I think that's ten minutes.
We do.
Because I think, did you meet with them, or?
So upon the announcement by the governor, which was basically a statement that he would consider revoking their license to operate New York State, I reached out to Arliez on Brian Saff, who works with those regularly on the projects in Garden City. He assured me that the capital projects that are going on in Garden City would continue. It was unrelated to the issue, which is the Nessie project, which bring gas through New Jersey into Fort Benet Hill area, Brooklyn, for extra supply. Today, I met with the National Grid here in the executive boardroom. And they had more members of their team there. And we discussed it again at length. And then at four o'clock this afternoon, I had an additional meeting with the Nessie-specific people who are conversing in that issue. And they assured me that the capital projects that are going on in this village are all related to infrastructure, reliability, water maintenance. And they have no, no attachment to the supply issue that is at the heart of the Nessie discussion.
And it also tied in with the rate increases that the Public Service Commission...
No, no, I didn't say that. It's just if their license is pulled, they're pulled. That's my concern. We have, for example, we have along Sixth, in front of Delphi, all the way across the Garden City Country Club, we have massive holes in the ground covered by plates that have been there now for months. And we don't even know when they're going to finish them, unless you've got an update, Joe. But I'm concerned that, you know, what incentive will they have if they started something else to finish it if they get pulled? That's just how we should push them out.
First of all, I think we're a little premature, Brian. You're right raising the issue, but it's just a little premature. First of all, they, the governor just can't pull it. He has to, it has to be a proceeding, a legal proceeding where they have to have violated just cause. And the governor and whoever tries to pull their authority has to go through a legal proceeding to do A, B. Assuming, and their lawyers, National Grid's lawyers, don't believe that the governor has just cause to do that A, B. I think most of us in this room realize that the governor is doing this for a political reason. He doesn't like them. He doesn't like Con Ed. He doesn't like PSC and G because it makes food press. Thirdly, even assuming it gets pulled, it's going to be at least a year before they're going to have a replacement. So if he pulls their certificate, they still have to finish up with what they're going to do. They've also promised us that they will not start any new major projects. What they will be doing is, anything on an emergency basis or anything that has to do with service, has to do with service. Now, having said that, maybe we can follow up with them, Ralph, Joe, tomorrow. Would be glad to, trustee Dorni has indicated about the plates. See where we stand on that and ask them if they would please get that done in the post haste. Just to round out the story, they have until Tuesday, National Grid has until Tuesday to respond to the governor. And they expect a response to be given to the governor prior to Tuesday. And they further indicated that in that response, they are going to respond to the governor as to how they're going to, on a temporary basis or on some type of a basis, comply. And so that those who have not had gas or have a problem with it, they are going to present a plan to the governor, which they think will satisfy the governor.
Again, I'm sort of only worried that if they came to us with some big project, then...
Well, they're not going to come.
So basically, they're rebuilding the gas system for the next hundred years. So these projects, I don't see you worried about the timeline. We'll try to get that timeline from them ASAP tomorrow. But they sure said, I think NG will be here for a long while. But even if they were, and the entity that replaced them would still need to do the project. It would be them for the same reasons they were starting. So it would just, it might be a delay. I don't anticipate it. Like they assured us that they are working on the capital side of these projects, which are funded and authorized by the Public Service Commission.
And a lot of them are tied in with their rate increase. So that they're going to be required, no matter who takes over, they're going to have to be done if they want the rate increase.
Now, if any work is done, they still have to open permits, right? So they have to, so they still have the request department, so we don't have any new permits being filed for.
No.
Do we have any?
They have, currently have eleven active open permits. We're working on doing in the village, ranging from a gas main repair, a valve repair. It includes the Dutch Fordway project, the one you're speaking about. So they do have, like I said, eleven open active projects in the system, permits.
Again, I was only, you know, just something we should be thinking about. What if they came in next week and said, oh, we want to dig up, you know, whatever street, all streets?
Unless it's, unless it's an emergency service, they are not going to open up any more streets.
Pretty much finish off what they have right now.
Finish off what they have until, until like they and the governor come to some kind of...
They probably gave their word that they would take care of those open permits and finish it down to a, you know, curving. I know, he's laughing at what I'm saying. I didn't say that.
I'm not laughing at them, I'm laughing at them saying they gave their word.
I believe that.
In all fairness, in all fairness, right? I mean, they have been more than reasonable in arreignings with them. And I have no reason to believe that they will not say what they're going to do.
The person I was on the phone with...
The guy who lives a block away from me with the big hole outside was driving for four months. He's not really believing it.
The person I was on the phone with today.
Give me a contact, Ryan, and shoot me that straight down.
I will. I'll text it to you.
That sounds fair. A four-month hole is...
Well, and I'm worried about winters coming, and they already have the signs up, you know, raise your plow. I mean, it's like crazy.
So one of the individuals on the phone today has been with the National Grid, he's lived for thirty-four years, and on the supply side. Actually, he's part of the design team that worked on this three-phase project. And he assured me that it's not a new project that people are informed about. Without commenting further on how we got here, I just want to assure the board and the public that the capital project totally not separate from the supply.
And just so you can realize, giving their word, he had no idea they were digging these fifteen by fifteen holes.
Well, hopefully, that's...
I pointed out, our TPW, they didn't tell us what they were doing. If you drive along Sixth Avenue, across Rockaway, in front of Delphi, keep going across Nassau Boulevard to Garden City Country Club. There are, I think, six of these. They are literally twenty by twenty, at least, covered in metal plates. And we did not know that's what they were going to do.
But let's make sure.
And that it's not any fault of our TPW. That's, they did not tell us what they were doing.
Shall we move on?
Joe's out to a bike race since one...
He's right.
And do any, is there a trustee that would like to comment further on anything? Alex here. Well, at this time then, we'll invite citizens' comments on agenda items only. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Then I will move on. And I have to approve two sets of minutes, and I think I have to do them separately, don't I? Yes, I do. Alright, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 5? This is a short, a special board meeting. May I have that? Trustee Foley and a second trustee, Rep. Noss. And all of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, and we have a seven that passes seven zero, that particular motion. Alright, now, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 7, 2019 meeting? Deputy Mayor Olbrook. Second trustee Foley. All those in favor? That case, that motion passed seven zero. Thank you. Moving to new business. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar at this time?
Questioning one time?
Yes.
On the storm sewers?
What number is it?
It's a one C and B. Just, I'm guessing it's going to be a trend that we do more of these every year than we have in the past. So I just, we have budget coming up in a few months. We should just plan for that. That's all. That's all. Doesn't need a spot if you want to.
Yeah, no. So, so this is actually a, not a bad thing. If you recall last budget session, we did not have a paving program this year. We postponed it for, we put it off for one year because we had prior work to do from prior years to catch up on. What that did was it freed up the street department, who does a lot of pre-work when we pave roads. Because we didn't have any scheduled roads to do, and the pre-work was done for the prior road paving, it freed up the street department's time to actually address more storm sewers than we had planned on addressing. And some older issues, some older problems, for example, parking field seven S, they were able to address. So they actually addressed more drainage issues throughout the village than were planned on due to the fact that we, they didn't lose some time because of the paving program.
Yeah, I just think, I think if we all walk around, you get to a corner and you see these catchbasins sinking into the ground. It's crazy. So I, my bet is, we're going to be always doing more. I just thought, budget, let's keep that in the back of our head.
That is, the first motion we passed, they were seven zero, seven zero. Okay.
I think you were asking for a very much consent count.
Oh, right, okay. May I have, I think I had to.
I'm going to consent count.
Okay. And did we already do it? Didn't you already do the consent count? Oh, no, you said wait, wait.
I said wait, wait. Alright, I moved it a second.
A second. All those in favor? That motion passed seven zero. Alright, now we would have to, and we would enjoy citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Citizens may come up to the microphone.
I think it's time now for us to get up. I think it's off, David. I think it's your time.
Do you want to?
You speaking to someone?
Yeah, no, the same lady here, wondering if now's the time or something.
If you have a, if you have a question or a comment, now's the time, about anything.
I have a question on a non-agenda item.
That's where we are.
Can you give us your name and address?
I'm Erin Smith. And my mother lives at 185 Thomas Fong Road, Garden City. Right now, I'm living at Scottsdale, Arizona. If you want better jobs, I will do.
No, that's fine.
So earlier this summer, we learned that we still had some open permits. We've been working with the building department, and Mr. G. and Emily is aware of our situation. To the best of our knowledge, the permits were originally filed by my father in 1989. And everything's been taken care of, including the other night, we appeared before the zoning review board for the air conditioning, and they gave us a conditional approval to leave it where it is. So we want to file the electrical and mechanical permits. But we're being told that there's going to be a five times the penalty because we're unable to find the paperwork that my dad originally submitted. I have a letter just explaining our situation along with his death certificate. If you'd like, I can give that to you. And I guess if the board could review our case and either grant us forgiveness of the fines or leniency, it's something we would greatly appreciate because this is really a financial hardship for my mother.
You can look at it.
Sure.
You want to look at them?
I have eight copies, so hopefully that should be enough. Actually, did I hand extra papers up on that, or was it all for you guys?
You don't have to give each one of us a copy, but Gina, she's going to look at it first, and then I'll put it down in there.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
If you have any other questions.
Did you have any questions?
Questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I think this time, unless there is someone else who would like to come forward, I think this time I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. And how about, uh...
I'll sign that.
A second? All in favor? And that can, you, can I second zero?